There we go. Great. Excellent. Okay, well, welcome, everybody. This is the District Five Portland School Board Virtual Forum hosted by the Deering Center Neighborhood Association. We are so fortunate to have Elizabeth Capone Newton, Sarah Bryden, and Luann Viola with us here. Three of the five candidates for the District Five Portland School Board. Thank you so much for running for office and for being willing to talk about, you know, with the neighborhood during Center Neighborhood and the general public about why you're doing so. Barbara Coghlan sent her regrets and Joshua Heffley, I did not hear from, but to my understanding, both are still on the ballot and running. Tonight's event will be livestreamed on our Deering Center Neighborhood Facebook page. And it will be posted to our Deering Center Neighborhood YouTube page. And then links to both will be emailed to our neighborhood email list. I'm Colin Apps. I'm the Vice President of the Deering Center Neighborhood Association and really happy to be the moderator tonight. So, welcome to the candidates forum, everyone. Couple of things about DCNA, the Deering Center Neighborhood Association, where a member-supported nonprofit and we're working to represent the interest of our diverse and ever-changing neighborhood. We also put on events. The most, the soonest coming up is the Garden Ramble, a new event happening June 5th. Look for posters around the neighborhood where you get a chance to see your neighbor's garden and much, much more. And then things like Porch Fest, which will be in-person again this September. Candidates Forum is another type of event we do. So happy to be hosting this on behalf of the neighborhood tonight. And if you live in the neighborhood, even if you don't, please consider supporting us at deeringcenter.me or come to our, one of our virtual or soon-to-be-in-person board meetings. Actually, we've had a couple of in-person board meetings. Keep moving around back and forth, but come to a board meeting, come to an annual meeting. So just so everyone knows who's listening in, we're going to be doing rounds of questions. These questions have been solicited from the neighborhood prior to the forum and from the Deering Center Neighborhood Association members. We'll have two and a half minutes per answer, per person, and we'll change the order over time of who answers as we go. Will be a couple of follow-up questions that I'll scatter throughout to try to make sure we get clarification. And apologies that there is nobody on, no live questions being taken. The candidates will mute themselves when not talking, if they can. And we have a timekeeper, Zach Enright from DCNA, who will be showing a yellow card at 30 seconds and a red zero. So that is a role, it's a role he's good at and something that I did not want to just throw on, on the audience out of nowhere. Okay, so let's get started. So the randomly selected first person to answer the question is, the first question is Elizabeth, and it is two and a half minutes, like we'll do for most of these questions, I believe. Talking about why are you running for Portland School Board, District Five. Thanks, Elizabeth.
Thank you, Colin and Zach, and I just want to say good evening to everybody that's listening. I'm sorry that I can't see your faces. It's always nice to, to be able to picture the crowd, so I'll just have to imagine the folks I know in Deering Center smiling back at me. My name is Elizabeth Capone Newton. Some people know me as Liz or Coach Liz. I'm a longtime volunteer basketball coach in Portland, one of my, one of my loves. And I'm a resident of Riverton, so I'm, I'm joining tonight from my home in Riverton. I'm running for school board for a few reasons. One is that I'm a longtime, you know, supporter of the democratic process and I believe in people being engaged. And I know that public service can be a thankless job, but that's okay. I think I've done a lot of thankless jobs in my, in my life. I'm 40 years old and I'm a parent of two children in Portland Public Schools. They are in fourth grade at Lyceum and in sixth grade at Moore. My partner is an ed tech in Portland Public Schools. He works in special education. And, you know, he's, he's one of the, of the many, but not enough bilingual staff of color in Portland Public Schools. And, you know, all these direct connections that I have to the district through the students that I've coached basketball to, through my own, my own children and my own partner as a staff person have really informed my experience of the schools. They've helped me get to know a lot of, of parents and families and staff. And just being engaged publicly, I've been following the school board for about eight years, following the city council for about 10 years. And, you know, I'm a strong supporter of public investment. And I also think it needs to be wise and we need to have really good accountability in terms of our, our public leadership and institutions. So, you know, I'm running because I feel like I can, I can bring that professionally. I work in public health and community health and nonprofit organizations and have a lot of experience with engaging people to solve problems. So I feel like I have a lot to bring to the table and, you know, it's a pleasure to be able to run. Thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth, and don't take the red personally. We'll all see it. Great. Sarah, why are you running for Portland School Board, District Five?
Hi there. Hi, everybody. I'm Sarah Bryden. I want to thank DCNA for hosting. And I also wanted to say a quick thank you to everybody who's taking time out of what I'm sure is a busy week to, you know, participate by being part of this, learning about candidates and, you know, yay democracy. Anyway, so a little bit of background about me, I grew up in Portland. I moved here as an infant. I went to Riverton, Lincoln, and Deering. And my kids now go to Talbot, which is, you know, it was Riverton, it was renamed, it's Talbot. It's very interesting when I go inside now as a parent, it's like the hallway's shrunk because I remember them as being really big. Anyway, so I, I, for work, I do compliance work for a software company. So I have that skill set of like detail-oriented problem solver type, type work. A few years back, I joined the Board of the Foundation for Portland Public Schools with an eye to help raise money for items that are really important to the district, but don't make it into the budget. And that would, that's been really wonderful. And so the last two years, I've also been a parent of, like I said, twin first graders at Talbot. And so the entirety of my time as a Portland Public Schools parent has been during COVID. It's been really interesting and I, I've watched the district sort of, you know, do the best that they can with the, with the cards that they've been dealt. But it's also been really, really challenging, particularly around school reopening at the beginning of, you know, kindergarten year, hybrid and all that stuff. And it was great to see the district be nimble, but speaking specifically as a working parent, trying to deal with that was really, really difficult. So I have been thinking about how I can help in ways beyond, you know, just calling people and emailing the school board and trying to figure out ways for me as one individual to make things better. And I think that serving on the school board would be a great way to do that.
Fantastic. Thank you. And finally, Luann, why are you running for the school?
Good evening and thank you so much for having me. My name is Luann Viola. And I actually have been a resident of Portland my entire life. I went through all of Portland Public Schools myself. And now I have a mother, I'm a mother of three and I have three children in Portland Public Schools. One actually gets to graduate tomorrow. So super pumped about that. So I have obviously a senior, I have a sophomore in high school, and then I have a seventh grader at Lyman Moore. So definitely have been in the school district for a very long time and embedded it as a parent. Have seen some really great strides come from those, the school board, and I've seen some misses along the way as well, which I think we've all probably have seen. My background is a project manager type of role where I'm constantly managing a lot. I manage a lot of budgets for the companies that I, I manage and do that type of work for. So for myself, I definitely work with a diverse people and a lot of people with a lot of different thought processes. And so I feel like that would be a really good fit for the school board to be able to work with everyone and collaborate and hopefully make the most robust plan going forward. And making sure that we can move everything forward for the entire community, not just a few of the community. I really am nervous with the fact that I've seen the past two years with COVID, as Sarah mentioned, the social and emotional liabilities that we're seeing in our, in our school kids right now, as well as some of our staff. I think they're feeling the effects of burnout. So that's something I really want to focus my time on. I think it's very important if we want our kids to learn, they need to be socially and emotionally ready before they can actually start grasping that academic learning. So that's what's important to me and that's why I'm running.
Great. Thanks so much and thank you all. Thank you all for staying on time and also right off the bat and also talking a little bit about how you have engaged in the, in the system in the past and currently through, through your kids. So it's exciting to have that direct experience with your, with each of your candidates. Can you follow up a little bit? And there was a couple touching on this, but for each of you, and I'll start with Sarah. Just a little bit more on your strength, strengths with a, with an emphasis on leadership experience and volunteer experience. And, you know, working in a school board in, or any volunteer elected position or elected position is, is grueling. And obviously sometimes without a lot of rewards, so, but requires leadership. So talk a little bit about that experience in the past, starting with Sarah.
Sure. So one specific example I can talk about is, I mentioned that I'm on the Board of the Foundation for Portland Public Schools. Part of that time I've been serving as Chair of the Development Committee. So, you know, that's, I think that is a, not only is it an opportunity for me to have learned a little bit more about, you know, some of the funding mechanisms that are available to make all the puzzle pieces come together, but it's also been an opportunity for me to step into a bit of a leadership role in that capacity. It, as, as I think Elizabeth used the word thankless, I can relate to that as well. And I, as I'm sure, um, school board services as well, but, you know, so I've had an opportunity to sort of get used to that in, in terms of, you know, being on the Board of the Foundation for Portland Public Schools, investing my time, asking people for money, you know, building community by asking for support among the network of people. Does that get at what you were intending with your question?
Yeah, and, you know, if there's anything else in terms of volunteer leadership experience you want to profile, great. And otherwise we'll move to, who's next? Luann.
Great, Luann. Thank you. For myself, I actually started out with volunteering, first off, even just in the schools when my kids were younger. I obviously work full-time, so it's kind of hard sometimes to actually get that volunteer hours in and actually be in front and center and help the children in the ways that I would like to engage with them. So I've actually took it upon myself when our talent show looked like it was going to have no longer be at Lyceum. I took that over for three years and smoothed out a lot of the ridges and edges along the way to make it a really robust program. So I was super excited to do that and watch these children develop and expand and get out of their comfort zone a little bit, which was very rewarding. Wasn't a huge thank you from anyone else, but it was a thank you for myself to seeing it's, it's the true impacts, right? That makes it really worth it to me and that's where, that's where it pays off for myself. I then, along with another parent, actually went and did a three-year stint of Girl Scout leadership because the fact there was no other Girl Scouts that we could actually have our children be able to be involved with. So we took it upon ourselves to actually go ahead and start another Girl Scout troop up so that our girls could then attend and be able to do Girl Scouts. On top of that, I actually was a United Way executive, which means I actually was loaned out by my, my further, our past employer, excuse me. And I was basically asking for money and getting money to donate for United Way and, and all the things that they represent. So community is very, very strong and near and dear to my heart. Most of it is thankless. However, when you see the outcomes and what it actually does for the, the community itself is, is the biggest impact for me personally, and that's what feeds me.
Well, sorry. Now I have a new problem. Great. Thanks so much, Elizabeth, please. Just a reminder, just thinking, particularly talking about your strengths with the focus on leadership and volunteerism, if you could.
Sure. So I was very fortunate to have early opportunities as a young person to develop my leadership and volunteer experiences. So when I was 14, I grew up in Lewiston Auburn, and when I was 14, I was invited to join the Board of Directors of New Beginnings, which is a large homeless youth organization in Lewiston Auburn. And I actually became the president of that board when I was 17. I also served during that time for the main CDC's formerly called Bureau of Health HIV Prevention Community Planning Group. And I was also an advisor to the School Based Health Center at the high school where I attended. Those are just some of the things that I had the privilege of doing, you know, in Lewiston Auburn. And I continued that when I moved to New York City for college and for working. I worked for about 10 years in, in public health and health research in New York City for large medical centers. And during that time, I continued to be a volunteer active on different community boards. And when I returned to Portland, to Maine 10 years ago and moved to Portland, I've been a part of a few different boards here, the Greater Portland Community Land Trust, Friends of the Portland Community Free Clinic. I was also part of the, you might recognize the United Way of Greater Portland's Thrive 2027 effort. I was part of the Education Committee for that in 2017. And I think more than any of those particular things, I mean, I guess I should mention just professionally, so I've worked in nonprofits for a long time. I was a supervisor for the School Based Health Centers for the city of Portland, when they used to be run by the city of Portland. I've, you know, been in a managerial and supervisor role in a lot of jobs. I'm, I served as the interim Executive Director of Presenta Maine, which is a community-based nonprofit here in Portland, as well as, thank you. I led the canvas for, in Lewiston Auburn, the, when Mike Mieschew was running for governor. So I want to say 2016, 2014, I don't know, sorry. But when Mike Mieschew was running for governor, he was endorsed by an environmental organization and I led the canvas in Lewiston Auburn for that group. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Elizabeth. Great. And so next up is Luann, first round. And the question is, you know, what, what do you see as the most important challenges facing Portland Public Schools? And what are some of your thoughts on how to address these challenges? This is one in which we're likely to have follow-ups, as I was saying, a hard one. But so, you know, pick one or two and we'll try to make sure you can follow up, please, Luann.
So for myself, just as I mentioned in the very beginning, I feel like our social, emotional health for our children is lacking right now. And it no fault of anyone's by any means. It's with COVID and being remote and just learning those regular milestone lifestyle, lifestyle skills that they would normally gain, that they have not been able to. And then on top of that, coping with everything that they've had to cope with, with COVID and whatnot in this way here. So for me, that is what's really truly important to me is to hopefully get these kids in a better way and a better way to actually get them in a more mental health state and be more stable than where they are today. I can assure, I'm sure many people right now are experiencing it in their own households with what they're seeing. One way I would see this would be a great way to do it is to do some internships with some local community colleges that are having social work and whatnot, maybe having them come in and kind of help out, do some extra mindset type of things with the children, anything as well as for the staff. I think the staff could definitely utilize some of the burnout that I'm sure that they're feeling as well. That to me here sincerely, before we can really move forward with bigger and greater issues that are just as important, I feel like before we can get there, we have to start taking up that step back so we can then move forward and get those greater, those bigger issues starting to be seen.
Great. Excellent. Elizabeth, same question, biggest challenges and how you might address them?
Yeah, um, so, I mean, I, I appreciate a lot of what Luann brought up. I think what I would add is that we have a housing crisis truly in our country, but certainly in our state and in our city. And so I think that that is something that the district needs to be aware of. It's possibly going to affect enrollment. And I think that we have to be thinking about what the, what the role of the school board is and just parents, families and staff in advocating for a policy change to address the housing crisis. So sometimes our role is not like our own policy change, right? But it's being a voice for what needs to happen in the community. And that's a lot of how I actually think about a lot of the issues facing the schools. It's sort of a question of both self and mutual interest and that they are not opposed. And so as in, it's, it's really important for the financing of Portland Public Schools, which is heavily based on enrollment, to take the long view in terms of the housing crisis and ensure that we are protecting our families. And of course, we would want to do that from a moral perspective, that we don't want people to be suffering in homelessness. And it's also just really good financial policy to be looking down the road at how, you know, increasing poverty and homelessness can really like devastate our public school infrastructure. And we don't want that to happen. So we want to be on offense about that. I think I see opportunities in terms of, you know, I'm still familiarizing myself with the union contracts and, and the budget overall. But I do think that we have the opportunity to spend less money on litigation and legal counsel and hopefully put that savings, which is often spent sort of playing defense against parents whose, whose children have needs. We can move that savings into adequately compensating our ed techs and our base staff. So bus drivers, cafeteria workers, school office staff. Thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth, and we'll certainly do some follow-up there. Sarah, same question to you, important challenges and how you might address them?
Sure. For the sake of talking about something that is not repetitive, I will talk about the challenge of communication. So I've seen, oh, and again, you know, I feel as though to a person, you know, everybody that I've interacted with at every level of the district is trying so hard, you know, everybody is doing their absolute best. And yet, communication continues to be a problem in, you know, in a number of ways. So I feel as though communication challenges sort of rear their ugly head, you know, when you go to get information about a school board meeting from Board Docs. It's really not user-friendly, you know, down to the day-to-day. And this, this is not, you know, obviously there are much worse problems in the world, but, you know, on a, on a federal holiday, I shouldn't necessarily be getting a text message reminding me about COVID symptom checks. It just, it sort of is an indicator of hmm, this should be low-hanging fruit. We should be able to fix this. So as sort of an overarching, you know, umbrella term, communication. In terms of opportunities, there's a lot, I think there's a lot of opportunities to improve communication through improving connection. So new opportunities for school board members, staff, both within schools and within central office, teachers to have, you know, more productive conversations. It's my understanding that the district is going to be rolling out a new website over the summer, so that'll hopefully be a big improvement. And, and I'm also cognizant of the fact that, you know, I can have a lot of opinions, but, you know, I feel as though being on the school board provides also another additional opportunity to learn and listen. So that's, that's another exciting opportunity for the potential future, and I know I'm about to get the red folder.
The dreaded red folder. Thank you, Sarah. So we'll do another round on priorities and, and, you know, for you, if you're elected. So I'll give you an option of going a little deeper on the ones that you talked about, or, or picking up another one, starting with Elizabeth. So, you know, I'd love to hear a little bit more on, you know, who would you be advocating with? Who would, who would be your target of the advocacy with regards to housing? And, and then also, you know, if you have time, another priority too.
Yeah, sure. So with the housing crisis, you know, some, certainly sometimes with education, we, there's state policy level issues that affect us. And certainly, people in Portland and I believe school board members have been vocal advocates of the state meeting their 55% commitment to funding public education. So I think likewise with housing, you know, it would, it would be appropriate for the school board and city council together, and most importantly, engaging residents of Portland. But it to, you know, communicate to state policymakers the importance of, of addressing the housing crisis. Obviously, there are specific things going on right now in terms of emergencies. What I'm talking about is really forward-looking, you know, short, medium and long-term. What is our plan for getting people in the state of Maine housed? And obviously Portland being the largest city, you know, we, we need a better plan than what we have right now. So, but in terms of other priorities, I'd like to speak to two briefly, which is, so English language learners are about one-third of the students in Portland Public Schools. And research is really clear that English language learners, everybody does best when they get a chance to develop literacy in their home language. And so the thing for English language learners is they're not getting that opportunity at school like speakers of English are, right? So when people who speak English go to school, they get to learn literacy in English, which is their home language. And when students who don't speak English at home go to school, they are not having very many opportunities to develop literacy in their home language. This can, providing these opportunities in a really clear and direct way can really help what we, what the district tends to call the achievement gap, right? And sort of address this from a more root cause perspective. The other piece that I would mention is universal design, which is a concept of having teachers, and I think it touches on what Luann said about social emotional learning a little bit. This is the concept that we teach as if we know that there are children with disabilities in the room, even if we haven't yet identified them. Thank you.
Great. And hopefully we'll hear more on that front from you. So Luann, you're up next. So yeah, can we probe a little bit more on your social, emotional learning point? And you mentioned, you know, one idea on bringing in interns from colleges or elsewhere. What are some other approaches you might take, you know, in addition, or if that doesn't work? And maybe another priority that you might have?
In addition to that, I would probably look at our budget just to see where could we maybe shift some priority. I feel that sometimes our budget, at least the budget I'm looking at right now, and I'm still digging into it to understand it fully, seems somewhat top-heavy. Where maybe it doesn't need to be, and if we could kind of skim off some of the top heaviness, we could definitely then provide some different aspects with social emotional learning. The other aspect of thought process that I have as well is with the budget itself. There's certain things in the budget that even came to light this year that I don't feel we should be paying for, and that came to light that we are. And I was, as a parent and as a taxpayer, I was a little upset with what I found, what we're paying for. One thing that I did find that was being paid for was someone had a resume that was going to be rewritten. And I'm a fourth-year resume isn't up to par. By all means, you should go out and have that redone for yourself. And I'm a fourth year resume isn't up to par. By all means, you should go out and have that redone for yourself, but it shouldn't be up to the taxpayers to do so. And the school board actually budgeted over $200 an hour to have that one resume rewritten. And for me, I'm sitting there going, are you doing that for every candidate? Because probably not. And so where's the bias going on with, with how are you deciding who, picking and choosing who you're going to try to make their resume look better to actually then get into the, the district? I just didn't think that was a really great way to spend some money of ours. So for me, it'd be being extremely budget conscious and really looking at the budgets with checks and balances and really reporting out to the taxpayers, even doing like a five plus seven of basically saying, this is what we spent so far. This is what we look like we're going to be forecasting for the rest of the year. And really being extremely transparent with that. I think that if we have transparency, you're going to have less of a pushback when it comes to budgeting, when you can actually see exactly where the money is going and how it's being spent.
Great, thanks, Luann. And Sarah, so sorry, were you, were you done, Luann? Great. So Sarah, yeah, I would be interested in, you know, as somebody who is, goes on the website every day, the, and looks to see when the calendar will be updated for next year, and I still don't think it's up there. I, I agree with you, both the website and some of the communications could be improved. So let's go a little bit deeper on like, how is that going to actually improve education? And you know, what are, what are some of the ways in which you can have an impact on that if you're elected and/or another priority you want to profile?
Sure. So in terms of, so how increased communication can improve education? So I think a big part of the work of the school board and, you know, all of the puzzle pieces fitting together needs to be focused on what is best for students. Like that's, that needs to be the, the central theme of what we're all doing. And in order to take the best solutions and ideas and ways to tackle problems, there needs to be effective communication across all those stakeholders, right? So uh, to sort of give an example to illustrate what I'm talking about, I realized a couple of weeks ago that, that I had a question and I had no idea who to go to. And so that was, and I, I, I found that it was especially frustrating because I was sitting, you know, in front of my laptop, trying to figure out who on earth to ask this question of, recognizing that I have a lot of resources. You know, I, I'm a fluent English speaker. I, you know, I have a lot of, I'm very lucky and very fortunate and I have a lot of resources that I can use to advocate for my kids and to make progress for the entire district. And if I'm sitting here going, well, who do I ask this question of? That's a huge problem. Um, so I think that if we can find ways to even solve that, you know, to an org chart, you know, that kind of, that kind of, you know, what's the low hanging fruit? Where can we make small improvements here and there and then build on those things? That will allow everybody who has really great ideas and creative solutions to problems to get those ideas out into the conversation. So they can be vetted and potentially used to improve the way we, the way we provide education to our students.
Great, thanks, Sarah. So shifting gears a little bit, all of you said you had kids in the school district like right now, like I do, and I think like Zach does. And I'd like you to channel like some of their experiences. So starting with Luann, you know, what are your impressions of how they experience the school district? Or, you know, their class and their previous classes? And, you know, from, and given that, you know, relationship, how or that understanding, how would you propose changing that experience for them? You know, what would you most focus on to improve their experience? In other words?
Yeah, I thank you. I think the biggest experience that I can think of that needs to change is, we all know middle school is horrible, right? I mean, let's be honest, it's, it's, it's a rough time. And you know, none, none of my children came unscathed with no school. The bullying that goes on in middle school is ridiculous. It's, it's kind of, and it's not just your average typical bullying that you would have had, like when I was in school and when others were in school. It's definitely heightened. And I think a lot of this has to do with social media and just the different trends that are going on. So it'd really be heightening that area of learning, of understanding of what those implications really are and what does that mean? And I mean, I know that just recently, at least at Moore, there's been quite a few instances that have been going on that have turned actually violent with actual fights that have been going on. So it tells me again, the social emotional piece is lacking big time. And we really need to focus in on that so that these children can all learn and feel safe and, and get the best education they possibly can. And that way they can then move on to be really good productive adults and, and you know, good, good people then, you know, in stewardship and themselves and making sure that, you know, they're spreading what we need to and be community versus a great divide that just keeps seeming to be growing and growing and growing, which is very disheartening right now.
Thanks, Luann. And yeah, I can, I, I've heard, I've heard the same from others. So Sarah, can you talk a little bit about impressions that you're getting, you know, through your, your children current or, or, you know, past years? And how you, you know, what you wish could change for them?
Sure. And so, so my kids are seven. And they love recess and lunch and snack. They love those parts of the day. They, they also, you know, they, they're excited to go to school every day, which is always a great sign. The, uh, one thing that I would be interested, so they love recess, they love snack, they love lunch. They're, they're having a tough time learning how to read. And I think part of that, you know, COVID, for sure. I was also interested to see a couple of weeks ago, an article in the New York Times about our literacy curriculum that has been, had been pretty popular and has since been discredited. And I started asking questions about, you know, how apparently it's being used in the district, but not in every classroom. And so I'm trying to learn more about that. Because, you know, if we have kiddos that are, you know, it's so important to focus on literacy as a foundational, you know, component that, you know, then you can, you know, read the instructions on your worksheet. So you can learn other stuff. Sort of, you know, foundational component of education. And if we have, I'm sure that my kiddos are not the only ones who are really frustrated right now and feeling as though there's something wrong with them. And, you know, everybody learns differently, of course. But I'm, that's one area where I'd really like to learn more and have really productive conversations about, you know, why are, to the extent that we're still using this program, why is that? There might be good reasons, but you know, I would, I would like to explore that.
Great, thanks. And Elizabeth, I think you said that you got a child in elementary or a child in middle school. So how, how are you seeing it through their eyes and what would you like to change?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so obviously the pandemic gave us even more opportunity to, to really up close see, you know, our children's experience of, and struggles with education. But even before the pandemic, also, you know, being a, a long-term volunteer in my children's classrooms, you know, helped me have that sense of things too. I, I would like to say for the privacy of my children that I prefer to answer more generally in terms of, of parents and families in the district that I know. So, you know, children in the schools that I coach basketball to, children of, of, of friends of mine and just families that I've come to know. So I think, you know, the challenge of one thing I've seen is, you know, my, my field is public health, it's not education. But as I've sort of learned about learning disabilities, and again, you know, my husband works in the Breathe Program in special education. So I've learned some from him. And my mom's an early childhood expert. So I've always sort of heard, you know, what she has to say about things. Anyway, from my limited layperson understanding of social emotional challenges, mental health and, and learning disabilities, I have found that there are a lot of children who don't seem to be getting any kind of help or services, but seem like they're eligible for them, that they would be eligible for them. So that's a concern, just because there are what, what are called child fine laws, right? Which is sort of a obligation on the, of, you know, under federal law, perhaps state law, maybe both, to seek out, to identify children with disabilities and serve their needs. So, you know, when I meet children who are, you know, who I know are students and I know aren't getting any services and I can clearly see their needs, you know, that's, that's a concern. I, I want to talk about restorative and transformative justice, or at least mention it. With one way that people can understand that is sort of like a mediation process. It's a non punitive way of dealing with conflict. And I think it's very important, it's a very important tool for the district to use with staff, with students, with families and between all three. So I think that addresses some of what Luann and, and Sarah talked about as well.
Great, thank you. Gears a little bit, you know, one of the roles of, if you're elected as in, to the school board will be searching for the next superintendent. So it's a big deal. And what are, so what are some of the attributes you think are really important? What are you going to be looking for top of mind in a new superintendent? And so Sarah is first on this one.
Okay, um, couple of things. So I think it's important to find a, a person who is just stellar at finding common ground. Because people have a lot of opinions, very strongly held opinions, I mean, there are kids, so of course. And so I, I think somebody who is just so adept at navigating those conversations, it's going to be so important. And basically somebody who can acknowledge that there can be several reasons for a number of people to land at the same result, even if they're coming at it from different perspectives and potentially for different reasons. Another, another thing that I think will be important in this, this came up in, in several conversations that I've had so far with voters is the concern that, and this is going to be, this would be very, very tricky to, to really suss out in the process, but making sure that we bring in somebody who's committed to staying for several years. So I heard a lot of concerns about turnover and then, and prior to a superintendent batana, just there being just a ridiculous number of superintendents over a short span. So I think that, you know, the next chapter, the next phase of the Portland Public Schools is going to be so important to have that longevity and somebody who's committed to sticking around and pursuing the progress that we need to pursue and the changes that we need to make and all of that good stuff. And, um, then just being committed to, you know, in it for the long haul type of approach. I think that's another very, that's another priority that I would have.
Great. Oh, I saw the yellow button one way. Thanks. And then Luann, same, same question. What are you looking for in the new superintendent?
Definitely someone who is a good communicator and a visionary. Our, our two definite things that I definitely want to see longevity, of course, would be a added bonus to say the least. But the biggest thing and biggest component for me is to have someone that is making sure that our students are learning and achieving at really high levels. And having like true KPIs of what does that look like? What is a true good learning? What isn't? And having that really good conversation to make sure we're really measuring and the metrics that we're using to measure our, our kids on are being utilized appropriately. And not just generally saying, wow, we have this percentage is doing this. But like, let's have some really good robust metrics in place so that we can really make sure that we're, we're providing the very best education for our, our kids.
Great. Next up, and I think when you are first now on this one. So do you plan to vote?
Sorry, I didn't have a chance to answer that question. Would that be possible?
I didn't think you did, Elizabeth.
Ah, sorry, Elizabeth. Yes, it's, it's more than possible. Sorry, I jumped a letter. I've got like, I'm trying to keep this sequence going and I've got, you can tell I'm trying to rotate and I, I failed. So Elizabeth, please.
No worries. Um, yeah, so I, I think I agree with a lot of what Sarah and Luann said. And I would add that I think it would be really great to have a superintendent who has existing relationships in the state of Maine, but ideally probably the city of Portland. I think that it would be good to have someone who maybe is a respected, respected colleague or professional among many, many district staff. I think that might be appreciated. Do I know if that person exists and also has the skill set that's necessary for a superintendent? I don't know. But I, I certainly think that somebody who has a lot of existing relationships, because they are the chief executive essentially, right? Of, of, of an employer that has about 1,100 staff. So I think, you know, having some established goodwill with and, and respect in the profession would be a really advantageous thing. And if it's not sort of internal to the profession or the district, then at least somebody very familiar with, with Portland and, and with the communities that live in Portland. I think we often tend to go to outside candidates. And while that might be appropriate sometimes, and of course, you know, if I were to be on the board and if I were to be looking at an applicant pool, I could very well feel that the best candidate was someone, you know, quote unquote, from away, and that could be true. But I, I do, I just want to make sure that we don't undervalue what it means to have somebody who has like, you know, the respect of their, of the people that they're trying to lead. And some maybe like institutional memory and history. Because one thing that I know from talking with staff is that, and this is true, of course, across the country, this is not unique to Portland. But you know, there's always some new initiative, you know? And so the longer you are around, especially at a large employer, right? You're talking about a giant bureaucracy and, you know, it, it's, you really kind of want someone who understands how staff on the ground feel so that they can be responsive.
Great. Thank you. And thank you for piping up Elizabeth. So Luann, now you're the lead on the next question, which is, do you plan to vote in favor of the school budget referendum and, and why either way?
This is a hard one, I'm not going to lie. Because I'm always in favor of obviously doing the very best by our school. But I am actually going to oppose this school budget. And the reason being is that I spoke to before is I feel that it's very top heavy. And I feel that we're losing sight of making sure that we're giving back to our students. And I know what the foresight is, like I, I see what their belief system is and what their thought processes with it. And I can, I can totally appreciate that. I just feel like right now is not the time to be maybe going forth with some of the foresight that they're doing.
Since we have time, I'll just do a little bit. So you taught, gave an example of something that you found in the budget in terms of the CVs, but can you give some other example of kind of top heavy?
Like for instance, the litigation piece, like there is a very large shift of budget that's been put in there this year. And I'm wondering why, and I haven't gotten that answer yet of, of the why. So there's, there's just some shifts around that. I'm just trying to understand the why. And because I do deal with budgets every day, I'm having a really hard time with the checks and balances and the transparency that we're not getting at this point in time with the budgets.
Great, thank you. Sarah, you're up next.
I will be voting in support of the budget. And I, I, it's not to discount what Luann was saying at all. First of all, I mean, it's perfectly valid. I've, first of all, I mean, it's perfectly valid for people to disagree. Um, but I, you know, I think Luann makes um, some some good points. Um, but. To me, it it feels as though those would be things to bring forward in conversation moving forward. Um, I I think that the um, the budget that is um, in front of us right now. Is. There's all, there's always um, some room for conversation and um, you know, getting into the minutia. But given all of the variables that I'm aware of, I think it's a, it's an appropriate budget for this year. So I'll be voting in support of it.
Great. Uh, thank you, Elizabeth.
Yep, um, I also support the budget. Um, and. The reason why is because in general, I um, am a proponent of public investment. And investing in our public infrastructure. And I think that schools are one of our most important um, areas of of public infrastructure. I totally agree that the hundred and thirty-three million dollars could be used differently. And certainly, um, my goal, you know, as a as a resident of Portland. Um, and and whether on the school board or not is to advocate for that money to be used um, in a more wise way in the future. And and in fact, the school board has the full authority to move money around during the year. They can, they can decide to do that. And so that's a wonderful thing. And um, and so, and the other piece I think is that, you know, as a renter. Um, and as a person whose children get free and reduced lunch at school. I, you know, I recognize that even though I'm not a direct taxpayer, my rent goes to paying the tax bill for my home. So I am very aware of the relationship, whether you're a direct taxpayer or whether you're a renter. Of of, you know, rising property taxes on the housing crisis. It's only one part of it, um, but it's an important part of it. And so I think that the school board needs to be more active um, and take more leadership as well as people from the community residents. In talking about revenue, right? Schools are about half of our city revenue. And um, I think we, you know, I think it's important for school board members to know what tax increment financing is. I think it's important for us to reconsider um, at the city level. Whether it is a a good idea to allow entities with very large budgets to continue to defer their payment of taxes. When we have individual homeowners who are struggling so much. So, yeah, I I support the budget. I I encourage people to vote yes on the school budget on June fourteenth. Um, and I encourage people um, to be honest about their tax, property tax burden. And look for other ways um, in addition to property taxes to fund our schools. And also to end the, you know, bleeding out of of certain revenue that we kind of don't collect, which I think harms us.
Thank you very much. So we found, found an issue that distinguishes you, uh, the this group a little bit. Um, but you know, still a lot of agreement and cordiality. I want to push it a little bit more, which is, you know. Starting with Sarah, um, what do you think is an opinion or an attribute that really distinguishes you from your competitors? And that's not just, you know, Luann and Elizabeth here, that's Joshua and Barbara as well. Um, you know, we're, we're all going to the ballot and I hope everyone goes and votes and it's ranked choice. So um, we need to be thinking about all all five candidates. And uh, we need to understand how to distinguish you from from the others. So give us um, a little bit uh, of your thoughts on on that, Sarah.
Oh, um, so just to make sure I understand, you're you're basically just saying, share an opinion that you think is not.
Yeah, I mean, you could also pick out opinions from each of your competitors. I think that would be harder. You know, but you are welcome to do so, or you know, even ask a question of of your others. But given that not all five are are on, it's probably easier to focus on what's a, what's a little bit different that about yourself.
Okay, um, okay. So I um. Let's see, uh, so rather than um, point to something specifically around, you know, an opinion that has been shared already in this setting. Um, what I'm going to do is I'm going to talk about um, uh, an area of of great conflict. And um, difference of opinion um, in the general conversation um, this week. Um, so I've seen a lot of discussion about um, in the aftermath of the Uvalde shooting. About where we go from here um, in terms of, you know. Approaches to um, changing the way, changing the expectations that we have of our teachers. And um, and so I I will say that my opinion is that we should be, um, we should not be. Um, introducing more um, weapons or um. Or. Hardening our schools. I would prefer um, to see, so and I'm also, I also want to acknowledge that. Um, that issue is not entirely within the control or not much is within the control of a school board. So what I do think a school board um, would be wise to do. Um, would be to take specific concrete action um, in. In ways that are proven to increase safety. Um, so for example, um, finding ways to do um, education and outreach related to secure storage. Um, of of guns is something that I would support. Um, oh, yellow folder. Does that get at, I mean, so it's not necessarily a way in which the three of us necessarily, I mean, maybe. But the the three of us are disagreeing in this conversation, but hopefully that gets at what you were looking to accomplish, Colin.
Yes, that's, I mean, it's a tough question. So yes, thank you. And may do some, do a one follow up. But uh, let's, let's go to Elizabeth next and and say, you know, what's, what's something that really distinguishes you from your competitors? Either on screen or 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 some of them off as well.
So I I just got a notification that my laptop battery is low and I need to plug it in. So you could have Luann go before me, or you could give me ten seconds to do that. I'm sorry.
Yeah, let's have Luann go. This is not, yeah, please, Luann, if you're up for it.
Absolutely. I don't know if I'm up for it, but I I can go. That is such a challenging question. And the reason I say that is just because it's like, you know, I know them from today and what I've read, but that's all I've known. So, you know, I feel like whatever I say, we still could correlate, right? So all I can really do is speak from a heart and who I really am. And that is, I am a mom of three, but it's not just about my kids, it's about all kids. And that's what's important to me is to be the voice for all of the children of District Five, as well as for all of the staff of District Five. And ask the hard questions and maybe be made the target in some senses, because I'm asking questions that people don't want to answer. And I'm willing to do that for District Five.
Excellent. And Elizabeth, you uh, able to plug in?
Yes, absolutely.
Great. So yeah, what's an opinion or attribute that might distinguish you?
Yeah, um, so I think what might distinguish me is that I. Represent some common ground. Um, I think um. In, if you want to look at it as sort of the two worlds um, of the more conservative um, candidates who are running. Um, and the, you know, liberal candidate that's running. Um, and in what I mean by that is that unlike my experience with most people. Who um, who are elected officials and and vote Democrat. I'm a person who's who's voted Democrat, you know, all my life. And I'm a registered Democrat. Um, but unlike um, the, what I. Have experienced with local party leaders in the Democratic Party. Um, I'm actually willing to challenge um, on principle, the decisions of fellow Democrats. And um, and look to have a way of solving our problems that is beyond uh, partisan rhetoric and party lines. And so that puts me, um, I think that distinguishes me quite a bit um, from from um, Sarah. Um, and you know, I I don't have a personal relationship with Sarah or Luann, like I'm I'm meeting Luann for the first time tonight. But you know, I have been following closely what people write in their candidate um, questionnaires. And I've been following who gets endorsed by which organizations. And um, so, you know, I think I'm somebody who, for the sake of advocating for the largest majority of residents in District Five. Um, and the city overall, as in, you know, the middle and the bottom is what I call us. You know, um, the the sort of bottom seventy-five percent of of the of of the people economically. I'm someone who's willing to talk about the issues that matter to those people. And um, and to find a way to talk about it that unites us. Um, and so I think that, you know, I think that's a unique um, thing that that I bring a willingness to. To get out of the sort of party framing.
Great, and thanks, everyone. It's a tough question. So we're going to wrap it up um, with some closing statements. So um, we'll do up to three minutes of um, just the final uh, thoughts. And you know, certainly can bring up any topics that you want along the way that we didn't ask about. Um, or somebody else brought up that you didn't really get to to respond to. And then we will close for the evening. Um, so we're going to go with Luann first, then uh, Elizabeth, then Sarah. Luann, please, thanks.
Absolutely. First off, I want to thank you all again for having this format tonight and being maybe able to participate. Because I wasn't able to participate in the larger format that happened earlier on. So first off, I want to thank you all for that. Um, really for closing statements, I am just a mom. And just a mom means a lot to me. Um, that's something I take very personally. I'm very passionate about not just my children, but all of the community's children. I worked very hard to be passionate and understanding. Um, I myself have learning disabilities, so I definitely can understand from that area of of schooling. And how how do you help educate and how you help a child that has learning disabilities? Since I am one that went undiagnosed the whole time with your school. So I know what that struggle is like and it's real. Um, but for myself, really, you need to pick who's the best candidate that you feel that you align with the most. I think that you have a lot of lovely candidates. I will tell you, though, I will actually, I will fight for every single one of your children and I'll fight for the staff. And I will, like I said before, I will speak up even when it's uncomfortable to speak up. And I thank you again for your time.
Great, thank you. Uh, Elizabeth.
Thank you. Um, well, I just want to thank everyone for, you know, hosting and being here. And um, the, when we were at the candidate forum last week at East End School. You know, almost all the candidates were there and I'm I'm sad that not all the candidates are are here tonight. But I think in a lot of ways, it's a really good group of people. And what I look forward to um, win or lose is um, to continue advocating. Um, and I think that is something that sets me apart from um, many other candidates. Is that I've been engaged um, with the school board and the district um, for a really long time. And I've learned from those experiences. And, you know, I believe in, um, I believe that the school district belongs to all of us. You know, um, the schools belong to all of us. And that we want to make a really big tent, as they like to say, right? Make a really big tent of um, of of, you know, how we envision what we're going to do and who we include in the problem solving. Um, and you know, we don't want to have the appearance or actual functioning of a top down organization. You know, we want to look to solve problems in ways that are not punitive. Um, whether it's staff, students or families, like I said before. You know, we want to get work towards a sense of collective ownership of what we do and collective responsibility of what we do. And, you know, I have a lot of skills around around building that. I am friends with uh, and not just friends, but I work with a huge variety of people. And I think that's something also um, that is something unique that I bring, you know. I I know people at all spectrums of income and race, ethnicity, language, bilingual, I speak Spanish fluently. You know, I um, I really believe in bringing people together. And I sincerely believe that we all have something to give. And I want to be really serious about, you know, accountability. And and listening to people who are directly impacted by problems and being responsive to them. And I don't think we have enough of that right now. So I'm um, I'm happy to to work collaboratively with people in District Five. Uh, to get more of that. And um, um, you know, an experienced leader and and um, someone who feels comfortable in a lot of different environments. Whether it's like, you know, walking around Riverton Park or or being at a city council meeting, you know? Um, it's kind of all the same to me. So um, just thank you for the opportunity to run.
Thanks so much. And Sarah.
Um, again, thank you um, DCNA for hosting and thank you, everybody who's taken some time to listen to us talk. I have learned so much from this campaign already. Um, it's been such a wonderful experience, listening uh, to the perspectives of people across the district. And if I'm lucky enough to be elected, I look forward to continuing to do that. So um, I'm very aware of the fact that, you know, my perspective is only a tiny slice of what the full picture is. Um, and so I'm, I'm committed to listening to concerns, um, suggestions. Um, you know, perspectives uh, from um, everybody who is inclined to share them. Um, I, I, my um, my default mode is collaboration and problem solving. Um, and so I I hope to be able to bring those skills to the school board. And and really, you know, try to solve problems across the, across the entire district. You know, whether that's, you know, kindergartners and my first graders, all the way up to Portland adult education. Um, and at every level of of the district in terms of, you know, all levels of staff um, and leadership. So I would, uh, I would so appreciate your vote on June fourteenth. Thanks again.
Thanks, Sarah, and thanks, everyone. So with that, we'll end the Dearing Center Neighborhood Association District Five Portland School Board Virtual Forum. I really appreciate the cordiality among all the candidates, um, excellent answers. And and most of all, thank you for taking the enormous amount of time and dedication that it takes to run. And and hopefully for two of you or definitely for, well, hopefully for two of you, I guess, serve. So uh, thanks so much and uh, really appreciate and and see you around the neighborhood.